The Leominster City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leominster, 978-466-1922.
Okay, this is a petition. This is a hearing before the Leominster City Council. This is petition 59-18. James Whitney and ten registered voters amend the zoning ordinance to add drive-through to the allowable uses under MU1 zoning. Mr. Whitney, if you want to come in? And we all know you, but if you could just identify yourself.
Jim Whit- Jim Whitney, 50 Old Mill Road, Leominster.
And do you want to just give us a summary of what you're looking for?
Yeah, last year, I think everybody was on the council, I changed the front, some lots in the front of Southgate Business Park to MU1 zoning. And since then, the registry of motor vehicles has opened up. And we have two other businesses that are building buildings in there, so there's been some activity on the front part of the park is where we were originally planning on putting a small strip mall for businesses that could service the people in the park. And that's starting to get some interest on that. And when we looked into the zoning, we found that there was not an avenue to have a drive-through under MU1. Yeah, under MU1. So we were just looking to have an avenue put in there that we could have a drive-through for a coffee shop, or a restaurant, or whoever comes along.
Okay. That would include a bank, or anything like that?
Yeah, any type of drive-in.
All right, before I get into any questions, legal affairs in the council may have, we've got a few recommendations, I'll just read them into the record. There's a recommendation dated May 4, 2018, from Christopher Knuth, the Director of the Health Department. Dear Ms. Bouchard, the Leominster Health Department has no issue with the proposed zoning ordinance change to add drive-through to the allowable uses under MU1 zoning. We hope the Legal Affairs Committee of the City Council finds our comments useful in their evaluation of this petition. Please feel free to contact our office if you need further information, or if anyone would like to discuss our opinion. We also have a letter dated May 22, 2018, from Kristin Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on May 21, 2018, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the above referenced petition, provided that a special permit is obtained through the planning board. This zoning amendment will affect all areas zoned MU1 throughout the city, and the planning board would want oversight for each proposed project on a case-by-case basis to evaluate the suitability of a drive-through in a specific location. The special permit process provides such oversight. Please contact me with any questions or concerns. Sincerely, Kristin Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. We also have a letter dated April 12, 2018. This is from Peter Nile, the Building Commissioner. Members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I am in receipt of a communication dated April 9, 2018, requesting my recommendation on petition 59-18 to amend the zoning ordinance to add drive-through to the allowable uses under MU1 zoning. I am not in favor of adopting this petition as it is not in harmony with the purpose of the MU1 ordinance. Article 4, Section 22-27 dot 1 dot 1, provide for the coordinated and mixed development of institutional business and/or industrial uses. 27 dot 1 dot 2 encourage adaptive reuse of abandoned vacant or underutilized business or manufacturing buildings or structures on industrially zoned land, or land previously used for industrial. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile. Frankly, not sure what that's trying to say.
Talking about rhetoric.
Can I, Mr. Whitney, can I ask you, with respect to the planning board recommendation? Had you seen that?
Yeah.
All right, is that something you consider unreasonable?
No, we actually had a, they had me on the agenda, had it on the agenda for a public, just to have a discussion on it before they even set the public hearing. And, yeah, anything, just to have an avenue was all we were looking for.
So if there was an amendment made to change your petition to reflect special permit of the planning board, that's not something you'd have a problem with?
Absolutely.
Okay. Counselor Frida, do you have any questions?
The only question I would have is, be it to be far enough back off the road, because you're talking about the front lot going in?
Yeah, well, the building would fall, whatever zoning setbacks are there now.
The only thing that comes to mind is the Dunkin' Donuts in Central Street.
Oh, yeah.
The Dip and Donut, I mean, the cars are in the road in the morning, trying to get in, so.
I can tell you that we're not going to do anything that's going to hinder traffic going up and down that road after everything we've done to design it to keep traffic flowing on that road. I would think the special permit process should be able to address that, too.
Well, I think there'd be a site plan in most cases, too. Counselor Bedanz, any questions?
No, you asked my question.
Did I?
Yep.
Any other members of the council have any questions? No? Okay. Is there any member of the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, is there any member of the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Any other questions or comments that any counselors may have? Counselor Marchand?
Mr. Chairman, are you looking to amend that this evening to include the special permit?
I was going to do some quick subcommittee work after I made sure everybody had their questions about.
Thank you, Marchand.
I mean, as Chair, I would, I think amending it to go along with the planning board's recommendation is reasonable, and I think it, you know, I think there's safeguards that are built in with the special permit process, site plan, and I think it would stimulate some growth down there. So that would be where I would be coming from. I don't know, Counselor Frida, how you feel?
Well, I agree, because it's not just this one, anybody else would come in to do the same thing. So we don't know who the next person's going to be. So I would support it because of that.
Okay. And Counselor Bedanz?
Yeah, I agree, as long as we adopt the planning board's recommendation, I'm good with it.
Okay. All right. There's, I guess we'll take action on this tonight. If there's nothing else at this point, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whitney.
Thank you.
And I think the next one is getting moved, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Allergies are killing me. Of course, I just cut the grass today.
If everyone hasn't had a chance, if you could read the May 23, 2018 draft from Brian Riley, we'll be dealing with that at the end of the meeting tonight, okay? So if you haven't read it, if you're just getting it for the first time, thank you.
Right?
That's correct.
I thought.
Okay, this is a hearing before the Leinster City Council relative to amending Chapter 13, Section 13-66.6 of the revised ordinances entitled Senior Citizen Parking by rescinding Section 13-66.6 in its entirety. Are there any members of the council that have any questions or care to comment on this particular petition?
We just need to clarify what that is. I don't want the perception out there that senior citizen parking has been eliminated or added, or we were sensitive around handicap parking at one point, same thing.
Well, I'll ask the petitioner if he wants to weigh in on that.
Sure, I'll just explain, I explained this in the past, but it's been a while since it's been on the agenda. I was going through this section of the, this chapter of the ordinance book and found a lot of stuff in there that needed some housekeeping. And so, back about thirty-something years ago, there was the senior center, before it was located up on West Street, was located down on, in the area of Mechanic and...
Mount Pleasant Ave?
Yeah, Mount Pleasant Ave, and where Whitney Street goes down, and obviously that is no longer there. So, the lot across the street used to be designated a parking specifically for the senior center, and that is obviously no longer in use, so it's just some housekeeping that we're doing, that's all.
Okay. Any other counselors care to comment or have questions? None, I'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, do any members of the council, of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, do any members of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, unless there's any objection by any counselors, I would close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Yep.
You know where Handigan Engineering is?
I think they're here.
It's right in the parking lot between Handigan Engineering, Banning Avenue, and it's adjacent to, I think I said Whitney Center, it's adjacent to Water Street.
Water Street.
Water Street, yeah.
Right.
Right, yeah, sorry.
Right behind the wood block.
Right.
Right in the middle.
Right, right behind the wood block, yeah. Yeah, so unless you were a senior citizen, you were not allowed to park there between eight and five Monday through Friday, when the senior center was there, and actually still for this day. But I don't know who enforces that anymore. No one.
Some of us have hit that threshold, so, you know.
I park there all the time.
Who see you parking there, we're gonna call.
Yeah, yeah. What's funny, because I went to the diner there one morning, and I parked there, and I said, hm, I really technically shouldn't be parking here.
Hold on, you do, where's Ray's?
Scarf law.
Yeah, a lot of it's private now, it's just...
The Scarf Law. My, where's the neighbor, the bar, it was bad, they're not in that building, but by itself.
J.C. Fenwick's?
The one that Mr. Vavazzi bought in one day and knocked it out on day two.
Oh, Spencer's?
Spencer's, remember Spencer's?
Sure, Rex's Diner, remember that too? Closer to the building? Plymouth Theater?
Okay, this is a hearing before the Leinster City Council relative to amending Chapter 13, Section 13-88 of the revised ordinances entitled Left Turn Prohibition by inserting Albert Drive Northwestbound to Central Street Southbound. This is Legal Affairs Petition 22-18. Do any members of the council have any questions or wish to comment? Been a while, so I'll ask the petitioner if he wants to just give us a quick summary.
Yeah, just once again, I was doing some housekeeping of the, this section of the, this chapter of the ordinance book, and I had asked the police department for some recommendations there, because I didn't know if I should put a yield sign or a stop sign, because there was nothing. And then while we're at it, since it's such a sharp turn, it might be a good idea to not have anybody take a left there, would be a little safer. And they would have to go out the other end only if they wanted to go south on Route 12, or also known as Central Street from Albert Drive, so obviously, they agreed, and so that's what brings us to this tonight, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cormier. Do any other counselors have a question or a comment? Do any members of the audience wish to address the council relative to this petition either in favor of it or against it? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, unless there is an objection by any counselor, I will declare the public hearing closed. In Chapter 13, Section 13-79, Yield Signs by inserting Litchfield Street facing drivers on the exit to Litchfield Street from Central Street Northbound, and Litchfield Street facing drivers exiting Litchfield Street heading southbound on Central Street. This is Legal Affairs Petition 25-18, and again, I'll ask the petitioner if he could just give us a quick summary.
Thank you very much, yeah, these, these stop signs have been, I mean, sorry, yield signs have been there for a very, very long time, and there was just no ordinance for them. So, again, just some housekeeping to make sure that everything is in order there, so. The police, I believe, approved of it, and everything's good, so.
Okay. Does any counselor have a question or comment? Seeing none, does any member of the audience wish to address the council relative to this petition either in favor of it or against it? Second time, does any member of the, of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this particular petition? Seeing none, unless there's an objection by any member of the council, I would ask that the public hearing be closed. Okay, this is a hearing before the Leinster City Council relative to amending Chapter 13, Section 13-40 of the revised ordinances entitled One Hour Parking Between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. by deleting in its entirety Central Street Westerly Side, beginning at a point 120 feet south of Union Street southerly for a distance of 205 feet. This is Legal Affairs Petition 36-18. Before I get into whether any counselors have any questions, I'd ask the petitioner, Counselor Bedanza, if you want to give us a quick summary.
Thank you, Counselor Dombrowski. This particular area, many years ago serviced, there was a doctor's office there, and the intent of the one-hour parking during those hours was to keep the area moving and fresh in terms of parking. Doctor's office is long gone, and some of the residents that live there have difficulty with this, and that's why I proposed it.
Okay. Do any counselors have any questions or comments relative to this particular petition? Do any members of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, do any members of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, do any members of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Do any counselors have any questions or comments? Seeing none, unless there's an objection, I'll declare that this public hearing is closed. ... relative to amending Chapter thirteen, Section thirteen dash seventy-seven, entitled[605.92][605.93]"Stop Signs" by inserting King Avenue against westbound drivers at Stewart Avenue. This is Legal Affairs Petition forty-two dash eighteen. Again, I'll ask the petitioner if he wants to give us a quick summary of this one. Is this yours, Counselor Bedanza?
No.
This one is submitted by the Police Department?
No.
Oh, it's yours? Oh, I'm sorry, Jill.
That's okay.
Well, actually...
You want to give us a quick summary?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Counselor Dombrowski. Actually, it was brought to my attention by the interim Chief of Police, Michael Goldman, that there was a need for a stop sign there. Westbound on King Avenue is kind of a straightaway. When people get to the end, there's no stop sign, and they can go left or right, and it's a very densely populated area with a lot of homes, very close, a lot of children. So he had indicated that he would support it, and so I filed the petition.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Feckley. Do any other counselors have a question or comment? Seeing none, I'll go to the audience. Does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, Mr. President, unless there's an objection by any counselor, I will request that the public hearing be closed. Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, unless there's an objection by a counselor, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Oh, God, that was riot. And then I said, and then I said, Rick, I was hurt, yeah. She'd be a lot more disappointed.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The public forum is now open. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda this evening. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. No one has signed up. However, the forum is open. If anyone would like to come to the microphone, please come to the microphone. Microphone's right.
Right next to me.
Okay. Second time. Come on up here. We'll just check to make sure that microphone's on. Beautiful. Thank you.
My name is Carol Gardett. I live at two thirty-one Merriam Avenue in Leamester here. I've been a lifelong member, and I'd like to address what's under C sixty-four. It's for our revenues, and the bottom line says the Recreation Department capital outlay expense of twenty-two thousand. For those that are not familiar with our program, I run a program at Doyle Field for pickleball. The Doyle Field tennis courts are in need of repair, and while doing the repair, I have gotten the Recreation Department to agree to take one tennis court and convert it to four pickleball courts. It's the court on the furthest left-hand side. So while they are fixing the damaged courts, they will then also provide the pickleball people with four regulation pickleball courts. I got two bids and submitted them to the Recreation Department, and Judy told me that they were looking at thirty-eight thousand to repair and do the four courts. I also just wanted to give you a little heads up. We've been running the program for five years. This is going on our sixth season. We had eighty-plus members last year. We already have seventy-plus members this year, and it's only the first month. And I've been averaging twenty-five to thirty-five people five times a week, two nights and three mornings. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, counsel. Mr. President, my name is Anthony Zarella. I'm here on behalf of petitioner Barbara Richardson on Item sixty-six eighteen, petition to accept Garfield Street as a public way. The street is already paved. It has streetlights. It has fire hydrant. The city plows it. It has city water and sewer, and we have the signatures of five of the six residents petitioning for this. There is one additional signature that we have here from someone who was out of town before the initial petition was submitted. So we would be happy to answer any and all questions when the matter comes before the council, and we would ask that you favorably consider it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Would anyone else like to come to the microphone? Second time. Third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. Thank you. We'll be going into session at seven-thirty. First, we have the interviews. Great. All yours.
All right, we have three interviews tonight. The first interview is for the Historical Commission term to expire April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Ronald Gerard. Just come right in here.
You have two this evening? Is that correct?
I thought I had three. We don't have Tyler Yehn. Then I have two. Okay. Yeah, anyways, you're comfortable, and make sure that the microphone works. There you go.
It's good. Is it good? Are you okay?
Fine.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Gerard, thank you for coming tonight.
Well, thank you for having me. First of all, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Ron Gerard. I'm a volunteer member for the Leamester Historical Commission. I've been a volunteer member now for the last two years, and I really enjoy what I do. In addition to the Historical Commission, I'm also a member of the Leamester Historical Society, and I volunteer for Leamester Television Access, or LTV, filming a number of city events over the last year and a half or so. Recently did an interview with Karen Byrne on a movie documentary. Got a movie award that I won this past year. Peter from Sentinel Enterprise did a two-story cover on me for the stuff I document at the Stroll Commission on photographs that we recently received from my uncle's collection. See what else. I'm going to be going upstairs pretty soon to help Dean out in the new radio station upstairs for WPLZ a couple of times a week. This summer, I'm filming the band concerts of Carter Park, and I plan on filming a number of city events for helping LTV out in any way I can, and that's pretty much what I do. What I do when I go into the Gallagher Building, I scan, document, catalog images in a program called FileMaker, setting everything all up, so when the future people are coming behind us, everything will be a hundred percent cataloged, and they'll know. If you come in and say, "I need a picture of downtown Leamester in seventeen forty," if I have it, it'll be there, and you'll be able to find it. And I enjoy doing that, and I put together a number of series of videos with the history of photographs from the old Leamester from the eighteen forties and beyond with music and subtle transitions in history, presenting our photographs in a different way that nobody's ever been able to see those before in the past. And as a result, we put them up on social media, and the response has been so overwhelming in the post. I talked to the mayor yesterday. He said he loves all my posts, but he can't keep up with them all, you know? But it's been good, and I really enjoy what I'm doing. And the reason why I'm here tonight is to answer any questions that you might want to ask me, and here I am. And about my education, I had to leave school when I was fifteen and a half because my family needed me to work and bring money in. I went to school years later, finished up my education. I went to college for a few years and learned everything I needed to learn, and, you know, I'm a former retired factory worker for a number of years. I've been retired since 2010, and I thoroughly enjoy what I do. My Facebook, I have over two thousand Facebook friends. Many of them I didn't meet. I constantly talk to people all the time. They enjoy talking to me, and I guess I'm just well-liked. I don't know. I have seen people draw over to me. I got over five thousand followers in addition to two thousand people on my Facebook page. And you can ask some of my fellow members, you know, it's been good with them too, because we're now referenced as Historical Commission and not the society, which used to be a thing in the past. People used to get us confused with the society. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but we are the commission, which is a totally separate unit.
Right.
And so it's been good, and all my Facebook, our Facebook's public, we've been drawing a lot of attention to the Historical Commission and the city of Leamester, like I said, bringing out history in a different way that's never been told before.
Right.
And I enjoy doing that. Now, what my current projects I've been working on, I've been going down to the city of Leamester, to the Apazas, and I've been documenting what I'm seeing, you know, putting it all together with any old photographs that I have, and putting it up on social media just to see what kind of response. And another goal of mine is to bring retail establishment back into Leamester, you know. With people... When people out of town, they've been out of town for a long time because they moved to Florida, whatever, people want to, they miss Leamester. So by doing these stories that I'm doing with the downtown, or the former Southgate Plaza, which is now Hannafers, and the Leamester Plaza, which I just put up on Facebook this past week, I go down and I document everything, and because people are out of town, and they look at that, and geez, I miss Leamester, I want to come back to Leamester. And that's the whole idea behind all this. And in addition to all that, if that's not enough, I took on the project of scanning all Leamester High School yearbooks, and we're going to share them up with the library and with the Leamester Historical Society, and we're going to be sharing with the Leamester High School, and put them up on the websites that need to be put up, so people looking for relatives or doing family reunions or high school reunions, they'll have all those photographs and all that information. And as an experiment, we put up a 1926 high school yearbook that I put up, and people are seeing photographs of their father, their aunts and uncles for the first time, and I'm getting a lot of positive response, and it's been really good, it's really wonderful, and I really enjoy what I'm doing.
That's great. You know, I can relate, because my oldest son lives in Florida, and he's always, you know, looking up Sentinel Enterprise for pictures of different things and, you know, the latest current events. So when I met you earlier, I asked you to give us a little bit of background, and you've done a very good job of telling us, and obviously you have a passion for this.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, what you've told us certainly, you know, has convinced me that you're going to be an excellent, you know, full-time addition or permanent addition to the Historical Commission. But I think that even better than what you just told us, the fact that three of your members of our esteemed members of the Historical Commission are here tonight to support you, so that means a lot. So thank you very much for telling us your story, and I'm going to ask if any other members of--
The only other thing I wanted to add, because somebody likes to talk all the time, me.
Yeah.
When I won my documentary award, Kyle had almost a whole page write-up on it saying all these kind words. I kind of just lost it, and I kind of broke out and I cried because of all the hard work that I put into my work.
It's emotional, and certainly--
And I never received an award like that before.
Yeah, I'm sure it was well-deserved.
And it was really awesome to get that. It was one of many, I hope, you know, down the road.
That's great.
But that's what I enjoy doing anyhow, making people happy.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I'm going to open this up to the members of the Ways and Means Committee, if they have any other questions.
I think you answered all the questions. Certainly, we all know what you do for the city, so I'm really happy to support your appointment.
Thank you. I saw you yesterday, and you know, I go out, I try to make as many public events as I can, and I'm really looking forward to doing the band concerts this year. Kyle introduced me to a new camera today, and I'm going to be messing around with that, so that'll be pretty fun, you know? And I know the mayor goes down there all the time to the band concerts, because I saw him there all the last year, then I used to talk to him all the time. I talk to him all the time every day anyways, because he's up every morning at 3 o'clock the same time I get up. And I'm down in the Gallagher Building, by the way, six days a week, and I just, I ask these guys if they can budget in the bed for me, but I can't get in the bite on that, you know? But it's okay, but I can't sleep a lot of times, and I'll get up and I'll go down to the building, and I'll just, you know, I'll open up the drawer, and I'll find a group of photographs, and sometimes, I'm like a kid on Halloween. I'm worse than a kid on Halloween. When I see a Leamester photograph that I never saw before, I'll scan it and I'll catalog it, and I'll look at it, and it goes, wow, nobody ever seen this before, many, many years, and I'll put it up, and I'll see what kind of response we get from social media, and next thing, it will create a trend. They call it a trend. And I just want to see what people tell me about a photograph, or what it reminds them of, you know? And I'm working on, another project I'm working on too is French Hill. I'm in the process of getting a dash cam, and I'm going to narrate what I remember about French Hill as a kid, and I'm going to take pictures and video on the side to put it all together in a nice cameo, and I thought that would be a really good thing to do, too.
That's excellent.
So these are some of the many projects that I'm planning on. And we got a second documentary plan with the movie theater that's coming up soon.
Well, it's good you don't sleep too much, you've got a lot to do.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think Counsel Debrowski had a question or a comment.
Oh, no, I don't have a question. I just want to thank you for all your efforts and look forward to confirming your appointment as well.
Thank you. You know, Dean told me in my, oh, yeah, by the way, you had an interview with Dean on his show Inside Leamester, and Kyle was telling me, he said, Ron, you know when somebody comes on the show, he only gives somebody usually about 15 minutes of airtime. You know you've got 45 minutes of airtime, and you spoke more than you did that night? And then he told me, he said, Ron, I was so happy that Ron talked about what he was doing and what he did, because he had a horse thrown that night, and it was, he really enjoyed it, really appreciated me just taking over the talking, you know?
Maybe you could take over.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm glad to take over any night talking you guys want me to help you out, you know? But thank you very much for having me down here tonight. It's been a privilege working with Dean and with the City of Leamester and learning about our history, and my opinion is it's very, very influenced me. Any questions that I have about a photograph or a history that I don't know, these, it's been really helpful with Linda Pender from the society and the guys that I volunteer with, and so it's been wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counsel Badans, we'll start with Counsel Badans, since she just mentioned you.
Ron, thank you very much, and, you know, obviously, you've been a great help in documenting the city's history, and I think what you have said this evening, which bears some repeating is that, you know, we're lucky in Leamester to have both a private nonprofit, the Historical Society, that's been around since 1906, as well as a really vibrant Historical Commission, which is a city department. And as Ron said in the past, people would sometimes get those confused, and they are distinct, but we do cooperate with each other.
Right, right, right.
And I think we have a great relationship, and we're willing to share assets and people and thoughts and ideas. And I think what Ron hits on is that this belongs to all of us, and there's a perfect example in this man of, you know, wanting to share that with the entire community, and that's what really makes it all worthwhile.
And you guys, Linda has a nice comb display set up now, and a milto spice set up. I'm going in there with the LTV cam, I'm going to be documenting that all together, putting that all together.
Yeah, we have a brand-new, couple of exhibits opening up pretty soon, but, yeah, I mean, the sharing of it, it belongs to all of us, and folks like Ron, and he's a great example of that, is somebody who really is doing his best to make sure that everybody gets to see it and participate in it and own it and love it like he does. So thanks for all your efforts.
Thank you for having me tonight.
President Mashon.
Thank you. You're amazing, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the other thing, too, Dean asked me in my interview that night, he goes, Ron, isn't this a lot of work? He goes, no, it's not a lot of work when you enjoy what you're doing. I enjoy it so much. The only thing that stops me is my ways, I have to go home and get some sleep sometime, you know? That's why he was asking for a bed, you know? And if you're going to get a bed, you can give me a nice 55-inch screen TV set with cable, I'll be all set, you know? But thank you very much for having me tonight.
I'm going to be asking the president to move up the appointments this evening on the agenda, so if you want to take a seat and wait for it--
Okay, sure, thank you.
Welcome to, thank you so much.
Before we begin the second interview, by law, we have to start session. We'll begin, we'll open, we'll recess, and go right back to the next interview. The official meeting for May 29, 2018 is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the name of the Constitution.
We'll begin with a roll call vote of the honorable members of the council, beginning with the Honorable Counselor David Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Frank Godinger.
Present.
Counselor Bonanza.
Present.
Counselor Feckley.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Debrowski.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
All nine members are present. Is the chairwoman of records ready to report?
I have no records this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do I have a motion for recess?
No.
Seconded? Thank you. We're back in recess. Back to the Ways and Means Committee.
And we have another interview. Board of Health term to expire April 15, 2021, Wendy Weeks.
Hi, Wendy. How are you?
So you know the drill, so go, no.
Well, I just want to object that I have to follow Ron, because really, I mean, that's--
I know, I'm sorry. It's the way it's, you know, alphabetical.
It's okay.
So Wendy, certainly, most of us know you very, very well, but for the public, could you say a little bit about yourself and your experience working in the City of Leamester?
Sure.
And why you want to be a member of the Board of Health, and what you feel as though you can contribute to that board?
Sure, sure. So I'm a lifelong resident of Leamester. I actually live on the west side, and I rehabbed my, when I was in my early twenties, and I still live there today. I started working a long, long time ago, seems like just yesterday, but I started working when I was in high school for the law offices of Antonioni and Antonioni. I did some campaign work for him, and when I worked there through college, and when I graduated from college, I was able to get a job with Congressman Over, doing constituent work, and then economic development work after that. Then I went on to work for, I went back to work for then Senator Antonioni, doing economic development work for Leamester-Fitchburg-Gardner area. And then Senator Antonioni retired, and I started working for the city, writing grants. And I brought in probably about $20 million in grants for the city. And so the reason I'm looking at the Board of Health is because from doing constituent work early on, you get to learn a lot about a lot of issues, from environmental issues to issues, you know, property issues, everything from trash to everything, it runs the gambit of the whole, everyone's issues. So I think that's where, and then doing project work, I also was able to, you get a different perspective, because you see how regulations can affect projects and people's lives. And I think the Board of Health is really a board that affects quality of life, and I think it's a really, you know, that's an important part of what I want to do. The reason I'm looking at doing something a little bit different from grants is, it's a lot to write grants all the time, you know? You need a little bit of variety. But I really, I really want to, I haven't been involved in the regulatory side of things for a long time, for like 10 years, and I'd really like to start looking, I know the board's always looking for people to interpret state laws that are pending, federal laws. I'd like to get back into some of that again and help the board do that sort of thing.
Okay, so when you say get back into it, when did you do it before?
When I worked for Senator Antonioni, I worked at the State House, and basically, you know, not only did economic development, but interpreted, you know, pending state legislation.
Regulatory issues, okay. And just for the public to know, there's only two members on that board right now, right? And I think about a year ago, there was four or five, so they need somebody else on that board to kind of, you know, if they can kind of vote or anything, it'd be important.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, so, okay, Wendy, I'm going to open it up to questions to the other members of the Ways and Means Committee. Counsel Frida, do you have any questions or comments? Counsel Debrowski?
No, no, I don't have any questions. We all know Wendy.
All right. Any other councilors have any comments or questions? Okay, Counsel Badans.
I just want to thank you for all you do for the city. I mean, I know the countless hours you work, and I think many of us do, and it's really appreciated.
Well, thank you. And it's not just work, I'm having fun doing it too, so.
Glad to hear that.
I think she sleeps here. I see her. I always see her coffee. All right, so, President Mashon.
I'll echo Counsel Bonanza's comments. Thank you very much, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Wendy, we really appreciate it. We really get such great volunteers in the city, and, you know, if you want to expand your participation in the city is awesome, because I know how much you do for it now, and to be able to do more, it's great that you use your time for that, all right?
And I'm a morning person, and the board meetings are like 7:30 in the morning.
Are you 3:00 in the morning, too?
No, no. But 7:30, I can do.
Okay, oh, all right, that's better. It's more in line with me. All right, so we are going to be moving up, I'm going to be asking the president to move up the appointments on the calendar, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, all set?
All set, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel's back in session, you're welcome. We'll begin with communications from the mayor, beginning with communication 58.
C-58, relative to the appropriation of $125,000 to the Fire Department overtime account, same to be transferred from excess and deficiency account.
Communication 58 is referred to the chairman of finance. Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the calendar. Regular course, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regular course on C-58. C-59.
C-59, relative to the appropriation of $5,000 to the City Clerk salary and wages account, same to be transferred from the City Clerk salary and wages account.
Communication 59 is again referred to the chairman of finance. Thank you, Mr. President, regular course. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regular course on C-59. Madam Clerk, communication 60.
C-60, relative to the appropriation of $40,129 to the Police Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
C-60 is referred to the chairman of finance. Similarly, regular course, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, C-60 has been given regular course. Thank you. Communication 61.
C-61, relative to the appropriation of $37,000 to the snow and ice overtime account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
This is referred to the chairman of finance. Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, communication 62.
C-62, relative to the appropriation of $13,000 to the snow and ice expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 62 again referred to the chairman of finance. Thank you, Mr. President, again, regular course. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regular course. Communication 63.
C-63, relative to the appropriation of $250,000 to the School Department expense account, $40,000 to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account, and $210,000 from the School Department prior year expense account.
Communication 63 is referred to the chairman of finance. Thank you, Mr. President, again, regular course, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regular course on communication 63. C-64.
C-64, relative to the appropriation of $572,000 to the general fund account as listed, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Fire capital outlay expense, $163,000. Highway capital outlay expenses, $232,000. Municipal building capital outlay expenses, $120,000. Emergency management capital outlay expenses, $35,000. Recreation department capital outlay expenses, $22,000.
Communication 64 is referred to the chairman of finance. Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regular course on C-64. Counsel Frida.
Yep, to the chair. Can Finance Chair send a letter to Judy and find out what her plans are in their Recreation Department expense account?
Yes, we can do that. It'd be done. Yeah, I'll echo that. Where's the additional money coming for the improvements to the tennis court? Specifically, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Frida. We'll now move on to regular course on C-64. Madam Clerk, communication 65.
C-65, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that Wendy Weeks be exempt from the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 268A20B, Conflict of Interest. Ms. Weeks is currently employed by the City of Leamester as the Grand Administrator and will be filling the vacancy on the Leamester Board of Health.
Communication 65 is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you, Madam Chair, regular course on communication 65. Communication 66.
C-66, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the approval of CBBG Budget Action Plan for the year '44.
Communication 66 again is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, this is first time on the calendar, but I would ask for a referral from the mayor, just asking if all of the allotments to public services were fulfilled, anybody that did apply, did they receive the grant money? We ask that question every year generally, just to make sure.
Okay. Madam Chair, would you like a breakdown of the recipients and also the applicants? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we'll get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Regular course on communication 66. We'll now move on to page 4, 68-18.
68-18, Officer Patrick Bresnahan, request no parking signs be placed on Mount Pleasant Avenue between Short Street and Pine Street against southeastbound traffic on the even-numbered side of the street.
Petition 68-18 is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course with a referral to the traffic agent of the Leamester Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regular course on 68-18 with a referral to the traffic agent. 69-18.
69-18, Noria Energy Corporation amend the license to store 30,000 gallons of gasoline diesel at 436 Lancaster Street.
69-18 again is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course with a referral to the Director of the Board of Health, the Fire Chief, and the Building Inspector, and we also need to vote on a hearing for June 25, 2018 at 6:45 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read for regular course with referrals to the Board of Health, the Fire Chief, and also the Building Inspector, establishing a hearing this evening for 6:25 18 in the Council Chambers at 6:45 PM. All those in favor of the hearing, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the hearing's been established. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Petition, thank you. Petition 70-18.
70-18, National Grid, Central Street, install one jointly owned pole on Central Street beginning at a point approximately 20 feet west of the center line of the intersection of 1155 Central Street.
70-18 is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course. We need to establish a hearing for 6:11 18 at 6:20.
Thank you, Madam Chair, regular course on 70-18. We're going to be establishing a hearing on 6:11 18 at 6:20 PM in the Council Chambers. All those in favor of the hearing date, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, the hearing has been established. Thank you, Madam Chair. 71-18.
71-18, National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Grant Street, install one jointly owned pole on Grant Street beginning at a point approximately 370 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Central Street and continuing approximately 16 feet in a north direction.
71-18 again is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Again, regular course with establishing a hearing date for June 11 at 6:25.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor, the recommendation read.
Mr. President, I'm going to be abstaining from 71-18.
Our Director, Councilor David Cormier, will abstain. Thank you, employer, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read on 71-18 for regular course and to establish a hearing for June 11 at 6:25 PM in the Council Chamber. All those in favor of establishing the hearing date, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, regular course has been given along with establishing the hearing date.
Mr. President, if I could, I request that the clerk get an update on the double polls that we got around the city. I don't think we, some of them that we thought were coming down, haven't.
Excellent, great.
So before we give them permission to put them up.
Okay, thank you. That may be not only a letter, but two or three phone calls to make sure the right person gets it, okay? So we'll work on that.
I think I have a guy now.
We'll work on that. Thank you very much for bringing that up. We now move on to appointments. We have one on council of aging, I refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
First time on the agenda.
First time on the agenda.
Okay, Council on Aging, Larry Gianakis Senior, term to expire April 15, 2021.
Now refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, and we will ask Mr. Gianakis to come down here for an interview.
Okay, an interview. We'll establish that for the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we're now going to move on to matters before the City Council, and before we move into the regular scheduled agenda, I'm going to yield the floor to the Chairman, Chairwoman of Ways and Means, the first individual of the Historical Commission. Madam Chair, you ready to report?
Yes, I am, Mr. President. We had Mr. Ronald Gerard here this evening. He is an appointee for the Historical Commission with a term to expire April 15, 2021. Mr. Gerard certainly exhibited quite a bit of knowledge, passion, and ability to participate within the Historical Commission, and I feel that he will certainly be an excellent addition. So I would be very, very pleased and honored to grant his appointment this evening, and I will go to my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You'll the floor to the clerk, Council Frida?
I agree.
Thank you. Third member, Councilor Dabrowski?
I agree.
Thank you, Madam Chair, do you have a report for the committee?
I do, Mr. President. It is unanimous that Ronald Gerard should be appointed to the Historical Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor, the recommendation read for the confirmation of Ronald Gerard to the Historical Commission, term to expire April 15, 2021. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote for confirmation, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Benanza.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Schelle Fozefer.
Yay.
Council Dabrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a vote of nine to nothing. We're going to keep him for a long time.
Yeah, yes.
Congratulations, thank you. Thank you. You're awesome. I'll now yield the floor back to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means for the second appointee before the committee.
Okay, this evening, we also had Wendy Weeks before us, appointee for the Board of Health, the term to expire April 15, 2021. We certainly know about Wendy's work ethic, and she explained to us this evening that as much as she loves her work for the City of Leominster, that she performs now, she would like to try to infuse something else into what she does for us, and she certainly has the experience, she has experience in regulatory rules and regulations from her time working with Senator, then Attorney Antonioni. So pending, I'd be more than pleased to recommend her appointment, but I believe that would be pending our passage of C-65 next week.
Right.
So with that in mind, pending the passage of that C-65, which is the conflict of interest, I would be very pleased to recommend that Wendy Weeks be appointed to the Board of Health, and I will go to my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You'll the floor to the clerk, Council Frida?
I'd be ready to support this tonight, but I can wait a week if that's what I want to do.
I'll yield the floor back to the Chairwoman for qualification.
Well, I would need qualification whether or not we need to pass C-65 before we could appoint her.
It appears as though you can, if you wish to confirm this evening, you can.
Okay.
Pending that, you know, the qualification of the petition that was forward in our next meeting.
Right, that was my intent.
And that's the intent.
Yes, yeah.
So past, your recommendation is to pass tonight?
Yes.
And then just, it's pending the confirmation? Excuse me, the qualification?
Yeah, we would take the vote tonight, and we're pending the passage.
All right, good. Third member, Council Dabrowski?
No, I'm in favor of that.
Madam Chair?
We have a unanimous recommendation to appoint Wendy Weeks to the Board of Health with a term to expire April 15, 2021, and we will have a confirmation vote, but it also will be pending passage of Communication 65.
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor, the recommendation read for the confirmation of Wendy Weeks to the Board of Health, term to expire April 15, 2021. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Dabrowski.
Yay.
Council Schelle Fozefer.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Benanza.
Yay.
Council Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a vote of nine to nothing. Wendy, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Okay. 59-18, it's on 5. Yeah.
You found it?
Page 5.
Okay. I'm also going to deviate, we're going to go to page 5 of the agenda, we're going to deal with 59-18. This is a petition before the Chairman in Committee of Legal Affairs, does the Chairman have a report?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. President. Petition 59-18, James Whitney and 10 registered voters amend the zoning ordinance to add drive-through to the allowable uses under MU1 zoning. We had a public hearing tonight, one of the recommendations was from the Planning Board Director, where she indicated that the preference of the Planning Board would be to amend this to allow the use by a special permit of the Planning Board. So initially, I would make a motion to amend 59-18 to be allowed by a special permit of the Planning Board.
Do I have a second by a Legal Affairs Committee member?
Second.
I'm sorry, Council Benanza, I saw the hand first, I apologize, everybody's on it, that's a good thing. Councilor, the recommendation to amend as stated by the Chairman of Legal Affairs, are there any questions or comments on the floor? All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the amendment has taken place. Mr. Chairman, do you have a report on the amended petition?
I do. I'd first like to note that the hearing, the petitioner had indicated that he had no opposition to the amendment. My recommendation would be to grant petition 59-18 as amended, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council Frida, the clerk?
I agree with that.
Thank you. Council Benanza, the third member?
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, please state for the committee.
The unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant petition 59-18 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant 59-18 as amended. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Benanza.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Schelle Fozefer.
Yay.
Council Dabrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a vote of nine to nothing. 59-18 has been granted as amended, thank you. If there's no objection, we'll move back to the agenda as planned. Okay, let's see. All right, we should be on page 4, and 64-18, we're dealing with Ways and Means and Veterans Affairs. Is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, if there's no objection, I can do the 64-18 and 65-18 in block.
Thank you.
64-18, Mason's Bowling Center renewed the license for 24 bowling alleys at 650 Rear North Main Street. 65-18, Joanne Atwood renewed the secondhand dealer's license for the Repair Place Inc. at 100 Commercial Road. Both of these petitions were referred out to the Police Department and the City Treasurer's Office, neither had objection, so I would recommend that they be granted, and I will go to my committee.
You'll the floor to Council Frida?
I agree.
Council Dabrowski?
I agree.
Madam Chair?
We have a unanimous recommendation for the approval of 64-18 and 65-18.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant 64-18 and 65-18 in block, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. 64-18 and 65-18 have been granted, thank you. We now move on to Legal Affairs Petition 39-18, is the Chairman ready to report?
Mr. President, I have a conflict with this particular one.
Thank you, thank you. So noted, Council Dabrowski is not involved with 39-18. I'll yield the floor to the clerk of Legal Affairs, Council Frida.
Thank you, Mr. President. 39-18, Prime Wellness Centers grant a special permit to build a medical marijuana cultivation facility located at 1771 Lockdory. We have a continued hearing for July, June 18, June 11, 2018, so the recommendation's for a time.
Thank you, Council Frida. Councilor, the recommendation read for 39-18 for further time, are there any comments or questions on the floor? The only question I have is, are we going to get that question that was raised regarding the distance? Will that be answered for this meeting?
It should be.
It has been qualified.
I believe the Building Inspector has investigated that.
Okay, I'm going to ask the councilors on Legal Affairs to make sure you feel confident that that's the right answer, okay? For when this comes up, thank you.
We're right on it.
Thank you. So further time on 39-18, any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, 39-18 has been given further time with a continuation of the hearing scheduled for June 11, 2018, in the Council Chambers. Mr. Chairman, you're back, 40-18, are you ready to report?
I am, thank you, Mr. President. Petition 40-18, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director, amend Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leominster Zoning Ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. We have a hearing scheduled for June 11, 2018. Accordingly, the request is for further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, recommendation read for further time on 40-18 with a continuation of the hearing, are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded to the Chairman of Legal Affairs, Ways and Means, also nice job tonight, thank you. We now move on to Finance, beginning with the financial report for the city, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. I'll start first with the excess and deficiency account of free cash, which was recently approved at $9,732,293. With all of the appropriations either passed or pending, those total $9,601,119, and as of this evening, that would leave a balance in the free cash account of $131,174.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Turning next to the stabilization fund, we began the fiscal year with $14,517,855. We've increased the fund by some, by an appropriation in the prior meeting, and the current balance of the account as it stands now is $15,61,952.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate that. We'll begin with Communication 54, are you ready to report?
I am. C-54 relative to the appropriation of $4,000 to the City Council Expense Account same to be transferred from excess and deficiency account. We have a letter from our City Clerk dated April 26, 2018, to the Mayor, Dear Mayor Mazzarella, I'm requesting an additional $4,000 to the City Council Advertising Account. This year, we've seen an increase in the amount of zoning amendments, special permits, and ordinance changes which require publishing in the local newspaper for both hearings and final adoption. The current balance in Advertising Account is $2,468.87, of which $1,684.87 has been already spent in the month of April, leaving a balance of $7,8399. I anticipate the cost of advertising to be at least, if not more, for the months of May and June in the publication of the completed ordinance, zoning amendments, and budget hearings. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions. I'll just ask you, Mr. President, to check with my committee members, but I would be in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Pauline Cormier.
I'm in favor.
Third member, Council David Cormier.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman?
The unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-54.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant, Communication 54, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 54 has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, I ordered that the sum of $4,000 be appropriated to the City Council Expense Account same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account, move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, that recommendation read, again, are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication 55, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-55 relative to the appropriation of $150,000 to the IT
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. Further time has been awarded to the Chairman of Legal Affairs. Ways and Means also, nice job tonight. Thank you. We now move on to Finance. Beginning with the financial report for the city, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. I'll start first with the excess and deficiency account of free cash, which was recently approved at nine million, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. With all of the appropriations either passed or pending, those totaled nine million, six hundred and one thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. And as of this evening, that would leave a balance in the free cash account of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Turning next to the stabilization fund, we began the fiscal year with fourteen million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. We've increased the fund by some, by an appropriation in the prior meeting, and the current balance of the account as it stands now is fifteen million, sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate that. We'll begin with Communication fifty-four. Are you ready to report?
I am. C fifty-four, relative to the appropriation of four thousand to the City Council expense account, same to be transferred from excess and deficiency account. We have a letter from our city clerk dated April twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, to the mayor. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, I'm requesting an additional four thousand dollars to the City Council advertising account. This year, we've seen an increase in the amount of zoning amendments, special permits, and ordinance changes, which require publishing in the local newspaper for both hearings and final adoption. The current balance in advertising account is two thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents, of which sixteen hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents has been already spent in the month of April, leaving a balance of seven eighty-three ninety-nine. I anticipate the cost of advertising to be at least, if not more, for the months of May and June in the publication of the completed ordinance, zoning amendments, and budget hearings. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions. I'll just ask you, Mr. President, to check with my committee members, but I would be in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the Clerk, Pauline Cormier.
I'm in favor.
Third member, Council David Cormier.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash fifty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication fifty-four. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication fifty-four has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. I ordered that the sum of four thousand dollars be appropriated to the City Council expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, sir, that recommendation read. Again, are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. The order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication fifty-five. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C fifty-five, relative to the appropriation of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the ITTF expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. We have a letter from Bill Mitchell, who is headed up this ITT account or ITF account, which is infrastructure and equipment. He gives us a history. This is in a letter dated May ninth. In fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, the council appropriated two hundred thousand dollars for a public safety project. This was intended to replace outdated equipment and virtualize more service to cut down on the amount of equipment needed for the Police and Fire Department computer infrastructure. Since that time, we have spent over a hundred thousand on miscellaneous equipment that failed, such as switches, air conditioning units, servers, backups, et cetera. As it stands, we have one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars left in this account. I think he means the equipment that was replaced failed. In fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, the council appropriated two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the city server upgrade project. This was intended to update two thousand and three servers across the city and purchase software that is no longer supported for the infrastructure operations. Since that time, we have replaced domain controllers, disk failures for our storage area network, new devices for backup, multiple switch replacements, et cetera. As it stands now, we have one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, seven seventy-three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars left in that account. We also applied for a grant to upgrade and virtualize our building software and services with Munis. We were awarded sixty-three thousand for that intent. We have to spend the money prior to July one, two thousand and eighteen. And this is the project that is now proposed. The city is still in need of replacing outdated equipment, software that continues to fail. The city also recognized the need for long-term goals that we can become more financially responsible with our IT vision and footprint. The Information Technology Task Force, along with Clearcom IT Solutions, Inc., developed a plan that accomplishes the reduction of equipment, lower management costs, extensive backup solutions, and redundancy emergency failover. The plan would include placing three large servers at the Police Department, three large servers at City Hall, and four large servers at the Emergency Management Agency. We would essentially virtualize thirty-two servers down to ten physical servers, create our own backups at emergency management, along with operation failover from City Hall and the police to emergency management in a case of a large disaster. Summary, the city's ITTF chairman worked with the purchasing agent to develop and send out a request for bids for the above-mentioned project. The lowest bid to accomplish this project was five hundred and seven thousand, four dollars and twenty-seven cents. The appropriation of one hundred and fifty thousand before you accomplishes the gap in funding between what is left in the balances of the previous appropriations in the lowest bid proposal. This appropriation is needed as soon as possible to award the contract and spend the sixty-three thousand in grant funding before it is lost. Please let me know if you require additional information or have any questions regarding this appropriation as soon as possible. Attached to his letter is a, are the bid documents with the base bid price by the contractor in the amount, as stated in the letter, five hundred and seven thousand, four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Would be my position to grant this this evening, and I'll have you check with my committee members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the Clerk, Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I think this is well-needed. I am in support.
Thank you, Councilor. Council David Cormier.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash fifty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication fifty-five. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. The petition has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. I ordered that the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars be appropriated to the ITTF expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, sir, the recommendation read for confirmation on the order to be adopted. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. The order's been adopted on Communication fifty-five. Thank you for the report, Mr. Chairman. Communication fifty-six, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C fifty-six, relative to the appropriation of ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars to the School Choice Revolving Fund, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is the result of an error that occurred when accounts were closed out at the end of the year. There are two accounts involved here. One was the room tax, and the other one was the School Choice Revolving Fund. Apparently, they were reversed. So as it turns out, one was labeled, one, they were both labeled the wrong way. The room tax money goes to the general fund, and the School Choice Revolving Fund account, when closed out at the end of the fiscal year, goes back to that revolving fund. So what happened was, is the room tax, which was ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and three dollars and seventy-five cents, was labeled School Choice, and the School Choice account, which totaled one hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, was labeled Room Tax.
Blessure.
So the money, the money, the delta between the two belongs to the schools, and this communication is intended to fix that error and put the ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars where it belongs, back in the School Choice Revolving account. And I'd ask you to poll my committee members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Clerk, Council Pauline Cormier.
I'm agreed.
Third member, Council David Cormier.
I concur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash fifty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication fifty-six. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. The communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. I ordered that the sum of ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars be appropriated to the School Choice Revolving Fund, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. The order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication fifty-seven, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash fifty-seven, relative to the appropriation of five thousand dollars for municipal building capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. We have a letter from Dean Mazzarella, the mayor, dated May tenth, two thousand and eighteen, regarding demolition slash asbestos removal costs. Dear members of the City Council, I would appreciate your support of an appropriation of five thousand dollars for costs related to the demolition of three buildings. Earlier in two thousand and seventeen, the City Council appropriated funds for the demolition of Ten Wells Court, one hundred and sixty Mechanic Street, and two hundred and twenty-two Mechanic Street. As you know, the demolition of these old buildings is always a challenge, and estimating exact cost is almost impossible. All three of these buildings have been taken down, and I think you will agree that it's made a significant difference in the neighborhood. The five thousand dollar request is due to higher-than-expected cost on two of the buildings for asbestos removal. In addition to the success of the demolition, our efforts have brought us two additional grants, one for the design of a park located at the corner of Mechanic and Laurel Street, and one for the construction of the park. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C fifty-seven. I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Clerk, Council Pauline Cormier.
Agreed.
Third member, Council David Cormier.
I agree as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President, the unanimous recommendation is to grant C dash fifty-seven.
Council, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication fifty-seven. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. The petition has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. I ordered that the sum of five thousand dollars be appropriated to the municipal building capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. The order has been adopted to the Finance Chair and Committee. Thank you for all your work. We now move on to Public Service, beginning with Petition sixty-six dash eighteen. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Before I begin, I'd just like to acknowledge Council Zarella for visiting us in our chambers tonight. I know it's not in that capacity, but nice that you can hear. We have nine million dollars that we had in free cash.
Used to have.
Barbara Richardson, it all, except Garfield Street, is an accepted way. We have a couple of recommendations back that we do not have planning or a city solicitor to read these into the record. Ms. Lynn Bouchard, City Clerk, Petition sixty-six dash eighteen. Dear Lynn, the Lemister Department of Public Works has reviewed this request and offers the following comments. The applicant needs to submit a plan and a deed description of what is being asked to be accepted. A couple of questions need answers. Who owns Garfield Street? Do the applicants have the ability to transfer the fee or an easement? Please let us know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Raymond Racine, DPW Director. And the second one is from the Building Commissioner, Peter Nile, dated May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, members of the Legal Affairs Committee, which should be Public Service. I'm in receipt of a communication dated May seventeenth, requesting my recommendation on Petition sixty-six dash eighteen to accept Garfield Street as an accepted way. I am not in favor of adopting this petition, as Garfield Street does not meet the city's minimum requirements for a road. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile. As I said, we're waiting for the Planning Board recommendation and also the city solicitor It's, that's up to the council president. He has a question.
We can't recess. I'm sorry.
All right. I can talk to you after.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. From the state.
So the recommendation, and I'll poll the committee, would be further time?
You have the floor to Council Odinger.
Yes, I agree.
Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Unanimous recommendation for further time.
Council, sir, the recommendation read on sixty-six dash eighteen for further time. Are there any comments or questions? Council David Cormier.
Thank you very much. I think it's been quite clear in my time down here that if anybody has a pet peeve about unaccepted streets, it's me. And, you know, I think I'd ask the question, I know we didn't refer it to the mayor originally, and I'm wondering if we should. And also, in asking Copman and Page for their recommendation or their response to this, if we can't, you know, get the deed conveyed to us, you know, what's the feasibility for taking the eminent domain? That would be something that the mayor would have to weigh in on, so I'm just wondering if we should ask, you know, that question as well. Because I'm not confident that we're going to be able to get a deed.
Through the chair, could you consider that?
Yeah, through the chair. We are awaiting response from Copman. We've, we've sent them asking for their recommendation, and I'm not so sure about the mayor. I mean, we can send it to him. I'm not sure, you know, what his involvement would be. I mean, a fee in the street is clearly, the only person that can transfer it is people that own it, you know? But sometimes both sides of the street go to the middle if the developer didn't keep that fee in the street. So it depends on how that original development was done, and whether the developer is even there, or how, I know other streets that I worked on in the past, we've done it when it worked. Each property can give up a certain amount of land in front of their property, however, it goes to the middle of the road, and then if everybody's in agreement, I know the mayor has done it, or the DPW, if there's more than two-thirds, I think, agreement, or eighty percent agreement on the street, and there's a shared cost on getting the road accepted. So I think Ray Racine would be the one to ask that.
Right.
And maybe with the attorney. They can check with the DPW and have a conversation with him.
Right. Because I'm just thinking through the chair. I'm thinking, this is an old, I mean, fairly old street. This wasn't developed recently, right? I mean, this is, sure, there's nobody out there that can convey the deed unless, unless they own half the street on each side, you know, the neighbors.
Through the chair, that's why it's important that the neighborhood be involved.
Right.
And deal with the issue. And sometimes it gets a lot of work, because they need to go to their bank sometime, depending on what the amount of land there is. Have to go to the bank and get a certain portion released. Some banks will do it, some banks won't. So I mean, it's a, it's a process that's involved, but it can be done, depending on how, you know, how strongly the neighborhood feels about it, so.
Right. Council Bedanza?
I think.
I'm sorry. Council Cormier, you're all set?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Council Bedanza.
I, I think the, what it will ultimately come down to, as these always do at this juncture, is someone needs to do a title. So in order to determine if, in fact, the, a butter is owned to the midline, or the butters don't own to the midline, that has to be established by way of a title examination. And it may be the, it may be the easier case, and if, it's a relatively short street, I believe. If they own to the midline, you know, the complication, as Council Frida well knows, would be getting all the lending institutions to cooperate in it. But if they don't own to the midline, then the question is, who owns it? And even though the road was created a long time ago, people have heirs. So it can be established, and you may be able to find the heirs or whoever is the owner, but none of that can be determined without a title examination. So the question is, who's going to do that?
Madam Chair, just for thought.
Yeah, that would be the neighborhood that has to do that.
Right, yeah, right. Okay.
So.
If I may weigh in.
Yeah.
The building inspector mentioned that the road is not in compliance with specifications.
But he didn't elaborate, so we need to go back to him.
I think the neighborhood needs for him to be specific and also be in line with the DPW's ruling on that. If, it could be off edges, as far as the width is concerned, or something that's easy to mitigate. So if we can find out on that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay, it's going to take a little time from this angle. So the recommendation?
I know Council Bedanza's on board. Council Dubrowski, you, for other time?
Public service, right?
Yeah, I don't think I'm on that committee.
Public service is going to be.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Council Odinger, Council Cormier, you're on a lot of committees.
I'm still on.
That's all right. That's okay. That's all right. That's all right. Councilor Dobrowski was ready to weigh in on that, no worries. He's on a lot of committees, too. Councilor Odinger?
Yes, further time would be appropriate.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Madam Chair? Okay. Councilor, the recommendation read for further time on 66-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation for further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. 67-18, is a chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. 67-18, Jill A. Natola. Accept Lexington Circle, together with the waterline easement, is shown on the street acceptance plan in Leominster, Massachusetts, prepared for the Sheldon Hills Realty Trust by Hannigan Engineering Incorporated, dated March 15th, 2018. Again, we're also waiting for the city solicitor's response on our question for that as well. But the building inspector, dated May 23rd, members of Legal Affairs Committee. I'm in receipt of a communication dated May 17th requesting my recommendation on petition 67-18 to accept Lexington Circle, together with the waterline easement, is shown on the street acceptance plan in Leominster, Massachusetts, prepared for the Sheldon Hills Realty Trust by Hannigan Engineering. I'm in favor of adopting this petition because the street meets city standards. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile. And from the Office of the Planning Board, Lynn Bouchard, City Council Petition 67-18, Jill A. Natola, Davis Bouchard. At a regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting on May 21st, 2018, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the above referenced petition, the acceptance by the City of Lexington Circle, together with the waterline easement, is shown on the street acceptance plan. The Planning Board has confirmed with Leominster DPW that the roadway has been completed to their satisfaction and is shown on the approved subdivision plan. Please contact me with any questions or concern. Sincerely, Kristen A. Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. So we are still waiting for the city solicitor on that? All right, DPW is also weighing in. Dear Lynn, the Leominster Department of Public Works has reviewed the petition to accept Lexington Circle as a public way and to accept the waterline easement as an easement. The DPW approved the petition as submitted. Please let us know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Raymond Racine, DPW Director. Again, we're still waiting for the city solicitor, so the recommendation will be further time as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor, the recommendation for further time on 67-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Councilor Bonanza?
Yeah, I would just ask the city clerk to make sure that the city solicitor's office has all those positive recommendations when they do their work. I think those would all be important and relevant to them.
Good point, thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of further time for petition 67-18, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll now move on to city property. We have petition, Communication 53. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, I am, Mr. President. Thank you. C-53, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested the property known on, to the assessors, as map 302, Block 1A, and located on Jungle Road be declared surplus. We had a public hearing on this meeting, and there were two items that we were looking for. One was the appraisal, and the other was a request for proposal, information on the request proposal, which is due on June 18th. So I'd recommend further time until June 25th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read for further time on Communication 53. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Councilor Bonanza?
I just wanted to point out again that if the RFP solicits a desirable response to the city, that it, by its terms, the contract can't be awarded unless the city council approves it. So we will, one of the things we discussed at our committee meeting is we will have more than just a theoretical proposition in front of us. We'll have an actual offer from somebody that we can evaluate before making a final determination as to whether to declare the land surplus or not.
Excellent. Thank you for bringing that up. Again, Councilor, the recommendation for further time on Communication 53. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to move on to the third appointee, Mr. Tyler Yalian, before Ways and Means. Is the chairwoman ready to report? Chairwoman ready to report, I'm sorry.
I am, Mr. President. We had a request from the mayor for a volunteer to the Office of Emergency Management Rehab Unit, Tyler Yalian, 83 Tolman Avenue in Leominster. We did have a recommendation from Charlie Coggins, the director. I will read it for the record, dated May 9th. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, with this letter, I am requesting the appointment of one new volunteer to the Office of Emergency Management. He is as follows, Tyler Yalian, 83 Tolman Ave., Leominster, Mass. Tyler has had the opportunity to see our rehab unit in action. His father, Jeffrey, is currently a volunteer in our rehab unit. Tyler is eager and willing to help out wherever he is needed. He's looking forward to learning and giving back to his community. He has been interviewed by the OEM Assistant Deputy Directors and myself, and was found to be worthy. A quarry has been run, and he does not have a court record. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Sincerely, Charlie Coggins, Director of the Office of City Emergency Management. So with that recommendation, Mr. President, I would myself recommend that Tyler Yalian be appointed as a volunteer for the Office of Emergency Management Rehab Unit. And I'll go to my committee.
You're the floor to the clerk, Councilor Frida?
I'm sorry, what was the recommendation?
To confirm.
To confirm the appointment.
I still think you ought to come in for an interview. I mean, other people take the time to get here. I just kind of feel strongly we should stay consistent.
Well, the reason why I did, and then we've done this before, this is maybe the third appointment that we've had, because they have been vetted so heavily by the OEM, they've been interviewed, and I mean, I take Charlie Coggins's recommendation very highly. But if it's something that's very important to you, that's fine, we can do that.
Councilor Frida?
Yeah, I'd rather interview him.
You're the floor to the third member, Councilor Dobrowski?
I respect the word, the councilor to my left's position. I'll go with that, that's fine.
Okay. So your recommendation would be?
Well, further time, I guess.
Okay. Okay. Madam Chair, for reconsideration or to restate their position?
Yep, without doubt, further time.
Okay, thank you.
We'll ask him for an interview.
Thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read for further time on the appointee, are there any, on the candidate, are there any questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, further time has been the direction for the emergency management appointment. And if Madam Clerk, if you can set up an interview, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. We now move on to old business. We have a second reading of an ordinance, formerly petition 21-18. Is the chairman of Legal Affairs ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-66.6 of the revised ordinances entitled Senior Citizen Parking by Rescinding, Section 13-66.6 in its entirety. We had a public hearing earlier this evening, and the recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Odinger?
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Frida?
Yay.
I shall recorde a yea by vote of nine to nothing. The second reading of the ordinance has been granted. We now move on to the next second reading of an ordinance, formerly petition 22-18. Is the chairman ready to report of Legal Affairs?
I am, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-88 of the revised ordinances entitled Left Turn Prohibition by inserting Albert Drive Northwestbound to Central Street Southbound. Again, we had a hearing on this second reading of the ordinance earlier this evening. The recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza?
Yay.
Councilor Odinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall recorde a yea by vote of nine to nothing. The second reading of this ordinance has been adopted. We now move on to another second reading of an ordinance, formerly Legal Affairs Petition 25-18. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-79 Yield Signs by inserting Litchfield Street facing drivers on the exit to Litchfield Street from Central Street Northbound, and Litchfield Street facing drivers exiting Litchfield Street heading Southbound on Central Street. Again, we had a hearing on the second reading of the ordinance earlier today. The recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, that recommendation read to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Odinger?
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Frida?
Yay.
I shall recorde a yea by vote of nine to nothing. The second reading of the ordinance has been adopted. Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, we now move on to a second reading, formerly petition 36-18. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-40 of the revised ordinances entitled One-Hour Parking Between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM by deleting in its entirety Central Street Westerly Side, beginning at a point 120 feet south of Union Street southerly for a distance of 205 feet. Similarly, we had a second reading of the, we had a public hearing on the second reading of the ordinance earlier this evening. The recommendation is to adopt this second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Odinger?
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Frida?
Yay.
I shall recorde a yea by vote of nine to nothing. The second reading of the ordinance has been adopted. Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, second reading of the ordinance, formerly petition 37-18. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 14, Section 14-21 of the revised ordinance entitled Ingestion of Medical Marijuana on Public Property by deleting the current text in its entirety and inserting in its place a new Section 14-21 entitled Consumption of Marijuana or Tetrahydrocannabinol.
Very, very well said.
I've had a lot of practice.
You're getting close.
Better and better at it.
We, again, we had a public hearing earlier this evening. The recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza?
Yay.
Councilor Odinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall recorde a yea by vote of nine to nothing. The second reading of the ordinance has been adopted. Mr. Chairman, we now have a second reading of an ordinance, formerly Legal Affairs Petition 42-18. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-77 entitled Stop Signs by inserting King Avenue against westbound drivers at Stewart Avenue. Again, we had a public hearing earlier this evening. The recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Odinger?
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Dobrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Frida?
Yay.
By vote of nine to nothing, the second reading of the ordinance has been adopted. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Update on Police Station LHSF Athletic Complex. It will never end until we put the shovels in the ground. Police Station's going well. Again, Mr. Mitchell is involved in negotiating our parcel of land that we will hear about later on. And also, the athletic complex is getting closer to an engineering plan finalized on modifications to be able to take care of many of the needs that were raised. We're hoping to see something happen with that by the end of this month, May. So as soon as it's ready, it's going to take some time after, as we know, but at least we'll be able to see a plan. Any questions on those two items? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Thank you. On the, on the athletic complex, Councilor Bonanza and I have been involved in at least two, I think, site visits and maybe additional meetings with the neighbors about that.
Yes.
Do you know, have the neighbors been involved at all? I mean, in the most recent, in the most recent draft, or is this a new version?
My last conversation with Anthony Cleves from Woodman in Bingham was that he was working on things like lighting, the driveways, the privacy type of pieces that were raised by the neighborhood. And what was happening is he was working with other engineers that were trying to modify the plan, and he indicated that the plan will be ready probably by the end of this month for them to see as well. So it's not like it's just going to, that's the end of it.
Right.
But imagine at that point, the neighborhood will be brought back in for confirmation on what, or qualification of what their needs were, if they were met or not. Absolutely.
All right, good, thank you.
Anything else on that? Councilor Bonanza, you want to add?
No, I think that's accurate, and that would make perfect sense, given the involvement of the neighborhood.
Okay, good. Good question, thank you. We'll just wait a second here. If everyone can get the letter out from Brian Riley? Okay, the next item. Okay, no, it's okay. Allergies and colds and, I know, I know.
Mold.
We're on this, yep.
Probably mold.
Don't say that.
That's what it is.
Say that. Okay, under new business, we have one item listed on the agenda. It's a review of an open meeting law complaint filed by James Whitney. Discussion and response. The piece that, that I saw in the letter that I just want to strike, and the process will be, we could have some dialogue on it, if there's anything that we need to put in the letter or extract from it, and then we have to take a vote on whether this is going to be forwarded accordingly. It would be forwarded to the Attorney for the Director of Division of Open Government, Office of the Attorney General, One Ashburn Place, Boston, Mass. The one piece that I, that I believe is not part of our rules here as the council, is actually the paragraph near the end, the last sentence, and Mr. Riley put in there, "It should also be noted, calendar item is listed to give counselors an opportunity to raise issues, comma, community announcements or concerns that are not on the agenda and not anticipated by the president." I think that we've been through this before as a, as a committee, as a council, and that's really not a place to be putting anything up there. That's why we have new business and old business, so if we wanted to deal with anything, that's where we would post it. I do agree with him that that's where we try to put our minds together at the beginning of the meeting to bring in some of the things happening in the community, so that's what the community calendar is really all about. Old business would, and new business would be accolades, you know, we could work it in there somewhere, for example, like Memorial Day. There's things that have to be said, that's, that's not a problem. We think about it as we come in here for the evening. Other than that, for example, I have a letter that I got today from the business manager, from the superintendent of the schools office. I'll put that on the agenda and then refer it to the chairwoman of schools, and then she can read it at her discretion, and we can have a discussion on that if you desire to have one. But other than that, I don't think that, I mean, the rest of the letter is pretty black and white, but I would like the council to strike that area in the community calendar.
I think, I think.
Councilor Bonanza, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, I think if you just take out the word "issues"
Okay.
Before "community announcements," and the words "or concerns" after the word, words "community announcements," I think you'll accomplish your goal.
Perfect. Madam Clerk, can you make sure you take your?
Dad again?
Yeah, please.
On that second to the last line of the second to the last paragraph?
Right.
Starting with the word "opportunity," strike the word "issues," and then after "community announcements," you'll see the words "or concerns," strike those two words.
Right. So it's just, a community calendar is for sharing things happening in the community.
Community announcements.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in on that? Counselor Frida?
I guess the only thing, and I can't remember, maybe somebody else would. I thought I got my letter at home.
This letter here?
No, not this one.
The letter.
Why about Jim Whitney? I thought I got mine at home, because it addresses getting it just before the meeting.
If we can first of all not use that name, and what we'll do is we'll just use the complaint, for example. I don't remember getting, if I can say, I don't remember getting it home. I remember coming to the meeting and it was in my paperwork. And I read it for the first time as we're getting ready for that meeting that night.
I agree, we did have it here.
Okay.
I'm just trying, I can't, I really can't remember, but I thought I opened one at home.
You may have, but I don't recall getting anything like that at home. I don't remember that one. Counselor Cormier?
I believe that I received mine at my home address as well.
You did the home address?
Yes.
Okay. All right, counsel, I'm sorry, one second.
Through the chair, the only reason I'm bringing that up is I don't want this to say, we just got it before the meeting, if that's not the case, because it won't change anything, but it's not truthful if we got it at home.
We, sometimes a communication that is sent may be inconsistent with the fact that it's sent to every single standing member on the council. And sometimes we find out that a letter came in, and it was intended for each one of us, so it was sent to our homes. But it may not be shared in an open session, so unless we communicate that with each other. I got one on a previous hearing that we had. And I thought that the gentleman who sent it to me, sent it to me because I'm gonna, I know him. And then after discussion with him after the meeting, he asked that it'd be read, it'd now be a formal letter right into the record, so I'm gonna submit it to Legal Affairs, for example. I don't recall getting anything at home, so there might have been, you may have raised the point that, you know, inconsistently, some councils were notified of this before.
All we'd have to do is take out along with the other members, which I think he's saying. In the second paragraph.
Okay.
Where it says, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, along, I think he means along with other members.
Right.
So if we just take that off, it's in parentheses anyway.
Okay, does anybody have an objection to striking that? Just let me raise that question first.
Right.
You have an objection to striking that?
I don't, but I just want to confirm that I did not get the letter at home.
Okay, I did not either.
Received it here.
I didn't either.
Okay. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr's had her hand up, go ahead.
Right, no, I did not get it at home either.
Okay.
And mine is date stamped, May fourteenth, which was the morning of our meeting.
Right, and so that's probably the same one that I got. Most of us got a copy of that. Okay, Counselor Feckley, you had your hand up.
Right, I also received it on May fourteenth, date stamped, May fourteenth, the morning of the meeting. So the first I saw of it was when I picked my mail up that day.
So if I can pose a question on the record.
But I have another point.
If I could just pose a question on the record before you bring the next point up. How many councils received the letter via mail at their home that can qualify it? Two? Okay, okay, so a couple. So most of us got the letter when we came here for the first time. Okay, Counselor Feckley, you have the floor.
So I'm not sure that we need to strike that, because it says, as stated above, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, along with other members, received the letter. It doesn't say all members, along with other members. Received the letter in question.
Along with some other members.
Yeah, I could see some of the members. I don't think we need to strike it.
Well, you'd modify it.
Modify it, yeah.
Along with most other members.
Along with the majority of the other members.
Yeah, we could even say that.
Okay. I'll make a note on that. We'll check the revision before it's actually forward.
Yeah.
It's actually gonna go back to Brian Riley.
Okay.
And he's gonna give us the next letter. And you're all gonna have a chance to see it before it's actually sent at that point.
Is there a timeframe when this has to be?
So many days, fourteen days?
Fourteen.
Well, how are we gonna? How are we gonna see that before the?
Electronic.
Right, because it won't be before the next meeting.
No, it's gonna be hopefully by the end of tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah. We need to move on this.
Okay.
You know, with the meetings in between, so. Okay, is there anything else in there that has to be, excuse me, revised or extracted? Counselor Dabrowski, you go with it?
I. Yeah, I'm good with along with a majority of the other members, making that correction.
Okay.
And did we confirm that it was brought up during the community calendar? Did we confirm that? I don't, I don't recall whether it was New Business or Community Calendar. I just don't recall.
You remember, Counselor?
I do remember, and I'll have to go back and look at the tape.
Yeah.
But it was, I raised my hand, and you had said we were moving on to Community Calendar. And I remember saying, well, this isn't really Community Calendar, it's really.
Okay, so if you said that, that's fine. That's fine. Was it Community Calendar, was before that under New Business?
Right, I'm pretty sure.
But it still wasn't listed on the agenda, and that's.
That's my memory as well, and I just think the letter should accurately reflect that.
Okay, so we need to.
That there was an intention to be heard under New Business versus.
Okay, two ways to do that. That would be in the minutes of the meeting. And the second way for confirmation would also be LTV review at the end. So we'll figure that part out, that's a great question raised. Can we get on that?
I think you're gonna have to do it on the video, I don't think it's.
Okay, the end of the meeting?
It's just, no one would keep track of that.
Well, unless they did.
Yeah, unless they did, right.
You know, there's some things in there. We had a hearing a couple of years ago with someone who came down here and literally lied to us. We found that out, that was in the minutes, you know? So, okay, is there anything else on that, in that? Counselor Pauline Cormier, you are an attorney, you feel comfortable with this?
I am.
Okay. So, Counselor Cormier?
Yeah, I just want to kind of understand how we're all going to agree on what the final draft is, if we're not gonna meet again before the next meeting, because we can't all have a meeting through email.
Right.
That'd be another open meeting.
I mean, otherwise, we'd violate the open meeting law, talking about open meeting law violation.
I got your covered.
I mean.
So this is the way it's to be done, okay? We've heard about the revisions tonight. Those will be added to the letter that's going off to Copeland and Page. What's happening is tonight, we have to cast a vote. And we need a majority of the council to agree or disagree. If it's agreed upon, the information with the amendments will be forwarded to Mr. Riley directly tomorrow morning. And then what will happen is he will send a revision out to each one of you to take a look at. We are not having a meeting at that point, but that's the piece that should basically be the verbiage of what we have discussed there tonight. So I think that should suffice. If someone has a major issue with it, you know, once we get it back, you know, what we'll do is we'll get back to him with it. For example, like the question raised, whether it was New Business or the Community Calendar. If we found out when he has the letter, he's not gonna send that letter on until we get it back. But again, it's a time-sensitive thing, so we have to make sure we get it out within that period of time. So is he clear, is the counsel clear on that?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so.
I don't agree on the final letter without having.
Okay, so look at the timeline. The ideal world would be this. The ideal world would be, we suggest the revisions, we can't make them on a computer at this moment. We have some things we have to research tomorrow morning very quickly. And what will happen is that draft will go back to Brian Riley. Brian Riley will then take our suggestions and put it in writing, and we'll get a copy of that back. But we can't move forward tonight with anything, without anything for Brian Riley to do, until we give him some formal response as far as the amendments we need to make to it. So we make, the idea would be, we're making some revisions in the letter. It goes off, and we agree to those revisions. Then they go off to Brian Riley. When it comes back to us, if there's strong opposition on a particular sentence or something that he said, it's not gonna be, there's really nothing that's changing from what we have in front of us tonight. It's just a question of a couple of items that we've brought up here tonight. And then at that point, the only way, thing we could do is have a special meeting and bring it back to the front, and then vote on it, and then it goes off. You know, we're trying to streamline the timeline, that's the problem. Counselor Bonanza, go ahead.
Right, so here's my question.
Yeah.
Who is going to review the tape? And to turn, I mean, I'm not sure it is even substantively relevant.
Right.
To his letter in the open meeting law question that's presented by this.
I agree.
So the one change that we initially looked at is innocuous.
Right.
Okay? The second one, I think, was looked at really for the sake of accuracy.
Correct.
So someone has to look at that and then report to Brian Riley what actually happened.
Right.
Again, I'm not sure it even matters.
Right.
But someone, I think for the sake of accuracy, we should get that correct, okay? Once Brian is advised what to do by our vote, if we take one tonight, there's nothing else. I mean, he can send it to us as a courtesy, so we can see the final document. But there's no other further counsel action unless we had a special meeting. So what I would suggest, I mean, I'm really, to be quite blunt, I don't want to come back here to figure out what the tape said, so we can make this change, which I think is not even relevant.
I understand.
So what, couldn't we just vote to accept the letter?
Right.
With the change that was recommended in the next to the last paragraph, as well as authorize either the city clerk or somebody to suggest when it was raised in the meeting, and leave it at that?
Right.
Is that appropriate?
I think that's pretty much what the council president has been aiming on. That's what you've been trying to say.
Not really. He's suggesting, well, he's suggesting to us that, and I'm not trying to be argumentative.
No, I understand, I appreciate.
But he's suggesting that we're gonna get it, and that we're gonna have the ability to do something if we don't like it. And I'm not sure that we want to go there. We need to vote tonight, don't we?
Well.
Mr. President.
The question of the New Business calendar will take less than five minutes in the six-hour meeting. And that's just looking at the end of the DVD or the CD. You know, we can probably run that when the business hours begin tomorrow morning and confirm that. So we could send the letter off, let him work with it. He may not be able to even get to this tomorrow anyway. And then if we can, if we make that change in there, whether it's significant or not, we can still have time to make the change. But we do have to vote on something tonight, unless we have to come back. Counselor Dabrowski?
Yeah, I respectfully disagree. I mean, I think it's important. My memory is consistent with Counselor Zephyr's in that there was an intention expressed to bring this up under New Business.
Right.
So if that intention was expressed, then I think it's a horse of another color. It was brought up under New Business. If that's the case, the amendment to the second to the last paragraph, we should leave to raise issues or concerns, substitute New Business for Community Calendar, and then delete Community Announcements and leave in raise issues or concerns that are not on the agenda.
If.
You know, it's one or the other, I guess.
If it was brought up on the New Business, the last sentence of the last paragraph isn't even necessary. Just take it out.
I mean, I don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Read it.
You're saying.
There's no reason for it.
In the case of it at hand.
Well, no, but you would substitute New Business, so it would read, it should be noted that the New Business item is listed to give counselors an opportunity to raise issues or concerns that are not on the agenda and not anticipated by the president.
Fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
You know, if that's the case, I'm pretty sure it is, though.
I agree.
Yeah. And then all you gotta do is substitute New Business for Community Calendar on the first page and add the majority of the other members. So I've conveniently doctored it up.
Okay, then you're gonna be conveniently working with the clerk on that, if we agree to it.
All right, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Frida?
Yeah, I don't know that the position of the comment matters. I mean, I think he was just referencing Community Calendar.
Right.
I don't think it, I think he was just trying to say whereabouts in the meeting it was. I don't think it matters if it before or after. I think the fact that he's just pointing out where it was brought up. So I don't know if we're overlooking the Community Calendar piece.
My interpretation is he's qualifying the fact that it is not breaching the open meeting law, and he's using Community Calendar as his reference point. But in reality, he's wrong, referencing Community Calendar in the way that he did, I believe.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying the complaint on the letter, if he did bring that up.
Right.
I think he was only doing it to say where in the meeting.
In the meeting it came up, yeah.
That it came up. I don't think.
Right, yeah.
I don't think the violation is implied by Community Calendar. I think it's just the fact of where it is on the agenda.
Okay. So let's, instead of beating this to death, because we may not really need to.
Right.
What is your, what is, can I have a motion on the wording? Either collectively or as an individual counselor? On what we want to strike or add from this? Counselor Bonanza?
Could I ask Counselor Dabrowski through the chair a question?
Sure, please.
I mean, do you have a firm memory of, I don't remember, honestly. Do you have a firm memory that that's what happened?
I'm pretty sure that's what happened, yeah. I'm pretty sure. I mean, I. I can't, I can't say I'm a hundred percent positive, but I am pretty sure. I'm pretty sure that's what happened.
Mr. President, could I recommend something?
Yeah.
Could we, first of all, I guess, renew my question. Who actually is gonna review the tape to figure this out?
Well, the clerk has the tape from the meeting. We don't need LTV, just go to the end of the meeting and listen to it.
Okay.
Right?
Could we come up with an alternative?
Yeah, why don't we give them two proposals? It's one or the other, so give two proposals.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what's Proposal One?
So I think Proposal One, I think I drafted. So the amendments to Proposal One on the first page, second paragraph, where the parentheses are three lines down. Right now, it reads along the other members, so I would insert along with a majority of the other members. And then also on that second paragraph, where it reads the second to last line, it says Community Calendar in quotes, I would just insert, I would strike that and insert New Business in quotes. And then the second to last paragraph on page two, three lines up, where it says Community Calendar in quotes, I would strike that and just put New Business in quotes.
Right.
And then the second to the last line, I would, where it says opportunity to raise issues, community announcements or concerns, I would strike Community Announcements. So we would just read to raise issues or concerns.
Right. He's just referencing that?
Yeah.
That's all?
No, I know, but I just think that if that is what happened, I just think it's better.
So that's Option One?
That's Option One. And then if that's not what happened, we go with what we initially talked about.
Which is just to make the change in paragraph two about the majority, along with the majority of other members, and go to the, what I raised earlier with the clerk about taking out the word issues or concerns.
Correct, yep.
So is that, that's your motion?
That's my motion. Well, that depending on the clerk's viewing of the videotape, whether this occurred under New Business or it occurred under Community Announcements, that depending on which one it is, then one of those versions will give to Brian Riley.
Right. What's interesting is that it either occurred under New Business or it occurred before the Community Calendar. That's what we're looking for.
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right.
We're looking for an intent of what it was supposed to be.
Right.
Right. So I'll second that motion.
Okay. Counselor, sir, the recommendation, the motion read, in a second. Do I have any further comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I guess I will abstain from this vote.
You don't have to. I asked.
Oh, good, all right, then, I won't.
You can absolutely participate. You can say anything you want, and you can vote on it, okay?
All right, good.
And that was qualified by, excuse me, John this afternoon before the meeting.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, oh yeah, I made sure. You're coming. Counselor Feckley?
I just had one, on my agenda, I have a note that Legal Affairs set up the meeting that we had tonight. And my recollection is that, and I guess when we see the tape, it'll pay off, that Counselor Shalfo Zephyr went in after Counselor Dabrowski was done setting up the subcommittee meeting.
Mm-hmm, that's what we're looking into.
So that would be before the Community Calendar.
Yep.
And I think that what was happening was, I think she was trying to get your attention. So I think before you went on to the Community Calendar. So I believe.
We were into that session between Ways and Means.
Play out, yeah.
In the meeting, we were into that for over six hours. It was at Donnybrook.
Yeah.
But I absolutely respect that statement.
That's my recollection of what happened.
So if I, I'm trying to go fast to finish, but there's still work to be done.
Right, sure.
Or a comment that wishes to be made, okay? All right, anything else on that? Counselor Bonanza?
I just, I was curious about this whole issue of unattested letters being received by government officials or the city. And I did a little homework. And it's clear that those documents are public records. They're not exempted under Chapter Four, Section Seven, Part Twenty-six. And interestingly, Bill Ricker had a problem with this, where they were receiving a lot of those types of letters. And they passed an ordinance that said that they would be immediately put in the trash when they came in, and then Brian McNiff from the Secretary of State's office said, not so fast, cannot do. I would just probably recommend that we develop some kind of protocol to deal with that problem. that problem in the future.
Right.
It's clear by Charter, Three Point Six, that it says, in general, the city council may make investigations into the affairs of the city and into the conduct or performance of any city agency. So, it would seem to me, by Charter, we have the ability to look into things like that, if that's what we chose to do.
Correct.
But it would also seem to me that they should be placed on the agenda.
Right.
And if they're going to impugn someone's character, you know, under the open meeting law, we're not required to, we can keep that, we could do that in executive session.
Right.
If we had to. I just think in the future, we tread carefully, that's all.
That's all. Well said. Hey, we're all human beings, we're exhausted. We do the best we can. We get tested. It's like an emotional roller coaster ride, being an elected official from one moment to the next. We get people that pit one another against each other, you know, and sometimes we get drawn in, just like we do our own children and families, it's the same thing, it's hard, it's a difficult thing. The safety net is that we have each other and we have council rules, that's the most important thing. And I think that, you know, the lesson I learned from the experience is that the council president should be a clearinghouse to work with, and if you have a question on something that you'd like to bring up, we know that, like even like the letter from the school department, I'll take the lead, I'll get it posted on the agenda, and then we'll deal with it.
I think we all got it.
Yeah, we did. No, it was a good, great letter, but I'm still taking that caution, you know, to make sure it's done properly, you know, lead by example when it comes down to our communications. But we also know what our limitations are, and a lot of times people come to the podium, they call us, they stop by our homes, and they ask us to do things that are totally, you know, inappropriate as far as us being able to deal with as an elected official outside of using us as a liaison or a mediator in the neighborhoods and also with the municipality itself. So we take that on, we take it on, and that's probably the driving force, especially, you know, when you're dealing with issues in neighborhoods. But when it comes down to the letters that we get, you know, let's just be careful with them and learn from it. Other than that, I think we just push on, we do the best we can. Any other comments or questions? A motion's been made on the floor by Counsel Dabrowski, seconded by Counsel Bonanza. Any further comments? If all of us are favoring the recommendation, please indicate in a roll call vote. Let's do a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Dabrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a yay by a vote of nine to nothing, we'll push forward with this issue. Thank you very much. Okay, I didn't see old business. Okay, I'm going to take a step back, is there any old business before the council? Okay, new business before the council, any new business? All right, Counselor, you have the floor.
Just going to schedule a Legal Affairs Subcommittee meeting for June 11 at 5:00 PM. And that's going to be joint with the Planning Board.
What time are you going to start?
5:00.
Okay, great, 5:00?
Yep.
Okay, good. While we have you here for our meetings, we're going to...
Oh, the same thing that was on today.
Today, same thing. Finance, we're going to be setting up Subcommittee meetings pretty soon, you're going to weigh in on who should be coming down and who needs to come down?
Yeah, I'll work with the clerk on that this week.
Okay, good, all right, thank you. Okay, anything else on the new business? We'll now move on to community calendar. I'm going to just give a couple of things out. Correct me if I'm wrong, there's a summer stroll happening downtown on June 11, correct?
No.
Nine, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
June 9.
I'm looking, yeah, June 9. Okay, so that's a sad day, June 9. We also have Starburst happening, the 26th Annual Starburst Event at Doyle Field, and that'll be happening on June 16. High school graduation right around the corner. I want to take a moment to thank Rick Voltor, Jolene Constant, and also our guest emcee, former Veterans Director, Richard Early, for doing a spectacular job. All the vets groups are involved, the Blue Star Mothers, we heard a lot of different groups involved here. A special thank you to John and Pauline Reberge. I believe this is the first time on Memorial Day that the Jonathan Reberge Memorial Park was brought into it. It was awesome. It didn't take a lot of time. When we left there, there was still 45 minutes to an hour, so there's plenty of time to do what we needed to do. I also like to thank Counsel Pauline Cormier, Frank Ottinger, Mark Bonanza, Claire Frida for speaking this year. It was very heartfelt what you said, and we really appreciate it. If I'm elected next year as the council president, the ones that didn't speak this year will speak next year. So we just rotate, so everybody has a chance, with the exception of me. Special, you know, shout out to the Lummester High Band, aren't they amazing?
They're awesome.
Yeah, Ray and Shine, they're going to be there, right? Just amazing, just amazing. I know Counsel Dave Cormier was pretty heartfelt with the songbirds this year. Again, all right, did a nice job.
Yep.
We saw Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the staff at the Evergreen Cemetery and all the different cemeteries in town. It hasn't been a pretty spring to be prepping for this, and they did a great job. And also, you know, the clergy that participated, all the people that came out, you know, it really makes you proud, you know, to be in Lummester. And sometimes when we share what this city does to recognize Memorial Day and our veterans, it's a little different in some of the other communities, we find out, don't we? So, congratulations on all of that. Are there any other items on the community calendar? Counsel Bonanza first?
Yeah, on June 7, that's a Thursday, at 7:00, the Historical Society is hosting myself and Senator Lou DeLisandro from New Hampshire. He's the longest-serving state senator in New Hampshire, and he's in a very unique position as a Democratic leader and deeply involved in presidential politics. He's literally a power broker nationally. When you run for president as a Democrat, the first person you see is Lou, because winning that New Hampshire primary is so important, so if anybody interested in that, I'm sure a lot of people can't wait till 2020. A lot of the Democratic contenders are already calling Lou. So if you want to meet the guy that is going to help pick the next Democratic nominee, come up to the Historical Society Thursday, June 7, at 7:00, and he's a fascinating guy with an amazing life and a great story, so...
Fantastic.
Yep.
I'll be there with the camera, so I'll take a complimentary photo for each of you, if you would like to. What you do is bring him out, have him sign it, and then put the picture in afterwards. I figured that went out a long time ago. Okay, anything else on the calendar? Counsel David Cormier?
Yeah, just, you know, just to touch upon Memorial Day again, I just wanted to thank the cemetery crew over at Evergreen and Pine Grove. These cemeteries are coming a long way from where they were a few years ago. I know that in the past, I didn't have such nice things to say, but I do have to say that they're working hard and trying to do the best they can with the limited resources that they have to, you know, make the, I think there's probably more than 50 acres